Good evening. The June 14, 2022 Regular Meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education is called to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section 331 3.15 of the Ohio Revised Code. Mr. Wade, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Bryner?
Here.
Ms. Cook?
Here.
Ms. Jessely?
Present.
Ms. Payne?
Here.
Mr. Tuttle?
Here.
Please join me in the front of the ladies. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I would like to welcome everyone to the June 14, 2022 Regular Meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education. Prior to this evening, each board member has received further review and consideration of the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval via the district's paperless Board of Education system, Board Docs. The public can access the agenda through the school district's website. The agenda is available through the district's website for public viewing the Sunday prior to the board meeting. Board members have the opportunity to call the superintendent and chief financial officer for information concerning the agenda items and to request, if needed, additional information. This meeting is being televised on a delayed basis and will be shown on spectrum cable channel 1026 in Mentor and channel 1025 in Mentor on the Lake. This meeting is also being videotaped and will be shown on our YouTube channel Cardinal TV Mentor Ohio. Please place your mobile telephones on silent mode during the meeting. Mr. Wade, in his role as CFO and Secretary of the Board Minutes, will now share some protocols regarding our public participation policy.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening. As the regulatory agent for the board, I want to take a few minutes to again clarify expectations for public participation at board meetings to help ensure we have a productive and respectful meeting. The board invites and welcomes public participation at our board meetings at two times during our meeting. The first opportunity to speak is on agenda items only. There is a second opportunity to speak on any item one wishes that is near the end of the agenda. Per our recently updated policy, Policy 1.12, participants may only speak one time during each hearing of the public session. However, participants may not speak on the same topic more than once per meeting regardless of the period of public participation in which such comments are made. Participants wishing to speak are asked to come to either of the microphones located at the entrances and are required to announce their name, address, and school or schools where their children attend, if applicable. Statements are limited to three minutes in length, and any questions must be addressed to the presiding officer. During the hearing of the public, we ask that all speakers exercise the appropriate decorum for the board to conduct its business. Specifically, in the case of participation, all members of the community need to be treated with respect. Members of the audience should not interrupt or speak out while someone else is speaking or during any portion of the meeting. As such, each person can and should have the opportunity to speak uninterrupted if they so choose. Please know anyone who repeatedly fails to comply with the expectations of appropriate decorum or deters the board from being able to conduct their business will be asked to leave the meeting. If at the end of the public participation, no statement is made, please note it's in no way demonstrates a lack of care for the comments shared by our community. We want to be thoughtful in our approach and provide a response in a timely manner when and if appropriate. Again, the intent of our public participation is to offer an opportunity to hear our stakeholders, so the board and administration may use the feedback to best serve our community.
Thank you. District highlights and recommendations.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. I would like to begin tonight's recognitions with our students who were not able to graduate with their class on June 4 because they were in Columbus competing in the track and field state competition. I would like to invite Mr. Crowe to the podium to present the awards, the diplomas, to the Mentor High School students, if they were able to join us tonight.
Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Porter, Mr. Wade, thank you for allowing us to come tonight. Unfortunately, neither one of our students were actually able to join us tonight. I know it's heavy traffic and they have a lot going on right now as really recent graduates in Mentor High School. I was hoping that we'd get a round of applause for both of our students. They are Brett Greer and Ty Malone. And the reason they were not able to attend our graduation ceremony on June 4 because they were competing in Columbus at our state track meet. So if it's okay, if we just do a quick round of applause for both Ty and Brett. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Crowe. Madam President and members of the board, just over two weeks ago, we celebrated the graduation of our high school seniors. Tonight, we also celebrate a different kind of graduation, that of our 2022 retirees. It is with mixed emotions that we recognize our retiring faculty and staff. We thank them for their many years of dedicated service and wish them good health and happiness in their retirement. I am joined at the podium by Mrs. -- our Director of HR, Mrs. Burnett, to accept a momento from us. As I call your name, please come on up on stage. I would invite you to walk across the stage, shake the board members' hands, and let's line up across the stage until we get everybody up here, until all the names are called, so we can get one good picture. Starting off, Erin Balanoff. Erin retires from Mentor with 17 years as a science teacher at Mentor High School. Tanya Benkar. Tanya retires as a teacher from Bellflower Elementary with 11 years of service. Susan retires from Mentor Public Schools as a family and consumer science teacher at Mentor High School with 17 years of service. Greg retires as an intervention specialist from Mentor High School with 30 years of Lynn For. Lynn retires as an intervention specialist at Orchard Hollow Elementary with 34 years of service with Mentor Public Schools. Robin retires after five years with Mentor Schools as a bus assistant. Sharon Hanson. Sharon retires as a teacher from Bellflower Elementary with 33 years of service with Mentor Public Schools. Judy retires as a library assistant at Memorial Middle School with 25 years of service with Mentor Public Schools. Cindy retires from Mentor Public Schools as a classroom teacher at Mentor High School with 24 years of service. Debbie Lasek. Debbie retires from Mentor Public Schools as a classroom teacher at Orchard Hollow Elementary with 35 years of service. Christina Malinowski. Christina retires as a steam teacher at Ridge Elementary with 30 years of service with Mentor Public Schools. Patty retires from Mentor Public Schools as a classroom assistant with 20 years of David Pancheck. David retires from Mentor after seven years as a classroom assistant. Vicki Prostag. Retires from Mentor as a custodian with 28 years of service. Diane Shiovone. Diane retires from Mentor Public Schools as a classroom assistant with 25 years of Shelley Smith. Shelley retires from Mentor Public Schools as a world language teacher at Shore Middle School with 33 years of service. Irene retires from Mentor Public Schools with 31 years as a secretary at Sterling Morton. Paula Serson. Paula retires from Mentor Public Schools as a speech-language pathologist with 31 years Kathy Stein. Kathy retires from Mentor Public Schools as a music teacher with 25 years of service. Sandra Stewart. Sandy retires from Mentor Public Schools as a classroom assistant in the preschool department at Mentor High School with 35 years of service. Yvonne Walker. Retires from Mentor after 20 years as a classroom assistant at Hopkins Elementary. Kathy retires from Mentor Public Schools as a middle school teacher at Shore Middle School with 33 years of service. Ron Wood. Ron retires as a teacher from Shore with 34 years of service. Suzanne Woodbury. Suzanne retires from Mentor Public Schools with 21 years of service as a bus operator with the district. Sue Zapola. Sue retires from Mentor Public Schools with 30 years of service as a secretary at Shore Middle School. Heidi retires from Mentor Public Schools with 31 years as the transportation dispatcher for the district. If you would hold your spots for a moment, I think Ms. Kirby wants to take a photograph Madam President and members of the board, at this time, I would like to invite Mr. Reno Contapelli, the Ohio School Boards Association Northeast Regional Manager, to the podium for a special OSBA recognition.
Thank you for having me. My name is Reno Contapelli from the Ohio School Board Association. The Ohio School Board Association proudly represents all the school boards in Columbus. Each year at our spring conference, we like to recognize those programs and board members who hit milestones and did special achievement. Last year at Capitol Conference, out of our top 100 programs, Mentor Schools actually had two in our top 100 programs. I just have a couple certificates that they missed at the spring conference. I'd like to recognize your construction management program and your Cardinal Credit Union Community Partnership for being part of our Capitol Conference Student Achievement Fair, and I'll leave him with you, Madam President, in a second. Also, when board members hit milestones, there's 3,500 board members in Ohio. Usually about 50% of those board members don't run for reelection out of their first term or don't get reelected. So when you hit the 15-year milestone, we like to come to your board meeting and recognize you at our spring conference and say thank you for all the hard work, the time away from your family, the dedication, and your leadership. And the first award I have for hitting the 15-year milestone was Board Member Thomas Tuttle. Congratulations, Tom, on 15 years. And my next year 15-year award is pretty special to me. Board Member Bryner is part of our leadership program, the Northeast Region. She helps the state out in Lake County. She gives up a few more hours and a few more meetings that she has to attend to. But Madam President, congratulations on 15 years of service.
And I'm going to leave these with the superintendent. Thank you, Mr. Contapelli, and congratulations again to Mrs. Bryner and Mr. Tuttle. We're going to have Mr. Crowe come on back.
Going a little off-script with the traffic today. One of our graduates was able to make it today. We would love to be able to -- the chance to recognize that individual. I'm going to bring him up here in a second. We're going to play our, you know, our pomp and circumstance for him. And then, Mrs. Bryner, as a board president, do you mind handing him his high school diploma in official manner? Brett, before you walk offstage, if you can, please move your tassel from the right to the left. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Crowe. We're going to take a short break for anyone that would like to leave. Of course, you're welcome to stay, but if you have other things to do, we certainly understand. Thank you for coming tonight.
Regular board meeting on May 10, 2022. Special board meetings on May 11, May 16, May 17, and June 2, 2022.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Tuttle? Yes. Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Jessely?
Yes.
Ms. Bryner?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Q. And hearing of the public on agenda items only.
Good evening, Bambi Vargo, Mentor, Ohio. I know Mr. Wade will be presenting some financial data shortly, and in the past, he has referred to spending for funding for tutors for children to get them back on target for their grade level after the district introduced online learning as a safety measure during COVID. I just want to thank the district for taking this extra step to help our children succeed.
Anyone else on agenda items? Thank you. We'll move on to superintendent's report and recommendations. Mr. Porter.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I have the following recommendations listed under the consent agenda and recommend approval of Items 6A1 through 6A3.
So moved.
Second, any discussion?
Please call the roll.
Ms. Jessely?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Bryner?
Yes.
Motion's carry five zero.
Thank you. Madam President, members of the board, I have the following board of education policy on the agenda for a first reading. Because this is a first reading, no vote is necessary. Madam President and members of the board, I have the following board of education policies on the agenda for a second reading, and I am recommending approval of both policies.
So moved.
Second, any discussion?
I just want to -- this is on the use of face coverings, right? I just want to verify or clarify for a lot of people were confused as to what we were doing there, and we're simply just taking that choice from -- to make that decision if there ever comes a time where, you know, it may be necessary for a superintendent to decide to put the face covering policy in place. We are just no longer going to have that be the superintendent as a sole person. It would be a board decision. So you would have to have at least three people saying yes for face coverings to be put in place. So I just wanted to clarify because I know I received a lot of information and feedback from the community, you know, as to why we were doing this, but with a new superintendent as well coming in, we felt like it was necessary for the board to make that kind of decision if it ever comes up again, but hopefully it won't.
Madam President, I also had several questions about this new policy, and I just wanted to talk a little bit about my thinking with this as well. And, you know, as board members, we have been elected, and we represent varied opinions, and the different perspectives of our members is important when we're making these decisions. I did have a concern that requiring a board vote might limit the flexibility if quick decisions needed to be made to adapt to the policies. And after talking with Mr. Porter, he did assure me that he felt that five heads were better than one, and if an emergency did arise, the board could grant the superintendent the power to make a change in an emergency, you know, for a short-term policy. I'm also comfortable that the language includes establishing procedures and requirements and compliance with federal, state, or local departments of health or education. And, you know, I just feel that as board members, we -- it's our responsibility to make this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Ready for the vote? Please call the roll.
Ms. Jessely?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Bryner?
Yes.
Motion's carry five zero. Before we move on, can we make sure that we accept the -- approve the resolution for the graduates? B1.
That was included in here, correct, Mr. Porter? B1.
Was?
On my page two.
I do have it under -- yeah. 6A3.
I believe it's under B1.
If that's a standalone item, then we should have a vote just to make it.
Yes, please.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
So, motion for B1, resolution and accept and approve the Mentor High School graduating class of 22.
I'm delighted to say yes. I move that we've accepted our graduates.
I got Ms. Payne for a motion.
Second.
Mr. Tuttle for it.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Bryner.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Madam President and members of the board, I am recommending approval of agenda item C1 related to certified personnel and C2 through C4, all related to human resource matters. I'm also recommending approval of agenda item D related to the MCE agreement, agenda item related to exempt employees, and agenda items F and G related to administrative staff.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
I just wanted to thank the Mentor classified employees under the leadership of President Donna Cola for their professional negotiations and the significant concessions that they accepted in health benefits for the financial health of the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Ms. Bryner.
Yes.
Motion's carry five zero.
Before I conclude my part of tonight's agenda, like we did a month ago with MTA, I want to also thank MCE for their collaboration and commitment in agreeing to a three-year contract. I also want to acknowledge and thank our exempt employees and administrators as well for their ongoing dedication. At this time, I would also like to take an opportunity to invite up to the podium two of our newest administrators for a chance to share a few words. First, our new coordinator of transportation, Ms. Heather Weisen.
Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Porter and Wade, I want to thank you for this opportunity to be part of such a great team of educators and staff. I am proud to be joining the Mentor Cardinal team, and thank you for making me feel welcome to the Cardinal family.
And next, I would like to invite up Ms. Julia Ezo, hired as a special education supervisor.
Good evening. Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Porter and Mr. Wade, I would like to thank you for this exciting opportunity. I'm very grateful to be chosen to be the new special education supervisor. It's an honor to return to the middle schools and continue to work with my colleagues at Mentor High School. I am committed to doing what is best for students and look forward to continuing to build relationships with my students and their families. Mentor Schools has provided me with opportunities and experiences I will never forget and have helped to shape my career. I appreciate all the support I have received from administration and my colleagues during my time in Mentor Schools. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. This concludes my portion of tonight's agenda.
Thank you.
Madam President, members of the board, I ask that you approve item A1, approval of the Medicaid School Cost Report Engagement Letter.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Bryner.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Porter, I ask for the approval of the NeoNet VOIP contract.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Ms. Bryner.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Porter asks for the approval of the agreement with ARKEYD management, also known as Fast Track Auctions, be approved.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Bryner.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Porter asks for the approval of the resolution determining the proposal for construction manager at risk services emitted by Millstone Management Company.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
I'd like to add that Millstone Management Company is awesome.
We work with them quite a bit.
Yes. They do a great job.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Ms. Bryner.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Porter asks for the approval of the resolution to ratify, approve, and authorize certain settlement agreements relating to real estate property tax complaints and appeals.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Thank you to Mr. Wade for the continuing effort to try to find a fair agreement for some of those individual situations, and it protects the support of our district. And I'm very, very grateful because I know it takes a lot of time.
Thank you.
This is a result of the, we'll probably be doing this every month or every other board meeting as a result of the new law.
These are to confirm the agreements that have already been entered into with the corporations that we've had to settle disputes that we had over the auditor's valuation of the properties, commercial properties only. So these are just to certify those properties so that there would be no recourse in the future because of the House Bill 126 that's passed.
That's good, so we beat the regulation.
Yeah, so we had those done prior to the July change. But there is a chance in the future that if there are appeals that we are going to make, we would have to present those to the board for approval and recognition before those become finalized.
Thank you. Any more? Please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Ms. Bryner.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Porter asks for the approval of the resolution to approve and authorize a settlement grants relating to real estate property tax complaint or appeal.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Bryner.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Porter asks for the approval of the resolution to appoint a superintendent in approval of the employment contract for the superintendent.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Ms. Bryner.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. At this time, we'd like to ask Mr. Craig Heath to step up and say a few words.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Porter and Mr. Wade. First of all, I just want to thank you for the process that we went through to get to this point this evening. I am so honored to be selected as the next superintendent here for Mentor Public Schools. My family and I are really excited about the opportunity to move to the district, to live here, to work here, and my hope is to retire here as well. This district is very innovative, and that's what drew me to this position. Every step along the way in my work in Hilliard, Dublin, Delaware, has led me to this spot. And I think what we can do together is going to be phenomenal. So happy that Mr. Porter will be sticking around in the district as a resource to me as I step into this role. I want to thank him for this opportunity as well. One of the reasons that this position was so intriguing to me, and I know we talked about this in the interview process, is family. My family lives here in Lake County. My parents still live in Perry. My sisters live in Perry. My brother still lives in Perry. And I can't wait to move here to Mentor to be closer to them. I want to thank my wife, Kathy, who's here this evening, my son, Brandon, my stepson, Evan, because without their support, I wouldn't be here today. I also want to thank my sister, Danielle, who's here with us this evening too. She has encouraged me every step of the way in my educational career as well. And I'm so happy that she pushed me to do this. Lastly, I want to thank my mom and dad. They can't be here this evening. They're going to be at home watching on TV later this evening, I'm sure. But again, I owe a lot to them and the way they raised us as a family. We didn't have everything we needed when we were growing up, but we had the love of their, of a mom and dad in our, in our house every step of the way. Finally, in our interview process, we talked a lot about the gifts that every single student in Mentor Public Schools has. And our role is to identify what that gift is, put things in place to support that gift, and help them be as successful as possible. I can't wait to get started on that process here. The superintendent of Mentor Public Schools is a dream job for me, and I am so, so blessed to be standing here today. Again, thank you to the members of the board. I am so excited for this opportunity, and I just can't wait to get started. Thank you.
Any other comments before we move on?
Madam President, I just would like to thank all of our stakeholders that completed the surveys and attended our community sessions. Your input was very valuable to create a candidate profile, our interview questions, and ultimately offer a contract to Mr. Heath. Our search was completed with the assistance of the Ohio School Board Association, who attracted several qualified candidates. And our interviews and reference checks used the concerns and desires that the community expressed that they wanted in their next superintendent. We believe Mr. Heath to be a thoughtful leader who will put the needs of our students at the forefront. Mr. Heath is known for his visibility in buildings and his relationships with students, staff, and community members. He has a background in data-driven leadership, and he is passionate about special education, work readiness skills, and forming community partnerships. And I'm excited to welcome Mr. Heath to our team.
I just want to echo what Maggie had said. She said a lot of what I had written down as well, so I won't go into detail. But I'm excited to have Mr. Craig Heath. And I think that we all took the feedback, especially from the surveys and the focus groups, and we did utilize that information to ask questions during our interview process. So we all collaborated, and I'm happy that we all had very open discussions and thrilled to have Mr. Heath, so.
Congratulations again and welcome, Mr. Heath. I look forward to working with you. Madam President, members of the board, several years back, Mentor Board Policy was passed that required us to annually present our permanent improvement plan as the board saw value in knowing what our capital needs were going forward on a five-year basis to both maintain our facilities as well as enhance our buildings and properties across the district. I will provide a look at our capital projects that are underway now, many projects that are scheduled or anticipated. Mr. Wade will also provide some financial context a little later on in the discussion. I will also share our most current vehicle replacement plan before turning things over at the end to Mr. Lynch to review our technology plan and furniture replacement plan. So together, we will ensure a safe learning environment, provide a balanced, high-quality education, maximize district resources, and encourage strong community partnerships. You've seen these four tenants, our beliefs. And that maximize district resources is really the focus of tonight's presentation. And based on the resources, one of our goals is to maintain and enhance fiscal stability by focusing attention and diligence on short and long-term financial planning. And that's what the board had as a vision several years back. That's why we've begun to do the five-year plan and update it yearly as we do. We also explore options for alternative revenue to maximize existing personnel, facilities, and resources. We think long and hard about what we need, when we need it, and are there other ways that we can help to reduce the expenses for anything that we may need. And a final goal, to ensure a continued and balanced approach toward an equitable distribution of resources to maximize opportunities across the district. We really want our facilities, our resources, to touch all of our students and families. So we have an eye on that as well. And we keep in mind our five fiscal management beliefs, and you've seen these before. Fiscal decisions should be made in the context of the five-year fiscal projections. There are management options attached to every dollar spent. Every dollar spent must add value to teaching and learning. And we know teaching and learning also extends beyond the classroom. There are a lot of lessons learned in many of even the extracurricular activities that our students engage in. We focus on aggressively managing the largest expense areas, salaries, benefits, special education, and facilities is there. And quality is always cheaper in the long term. Couple of things to keep in mind as we head into the yearly, you know, look. Design services and construction manager at risk are in play. Just a reminder that Taylor Consulting Group was hired in the 2021 school year to assist us with our roofing projects. We have many roofing projects. Our buildings are aging, but generally still in good condition. But we do recognize they have roofing needs, and a lot of those are happening, you know, over these five or 10 years. Likewise, the Board of Education approved our agreement with Millstone Management in the same year to provide us construction manager at-risk services. And as Mr. Tuttle pointed out, Millstone has been excellent for us. Both these groups are able to assist us in making sure we are appropriately planning, implementing, and managing our projects to help add value and save us time and money on our projects in the long run. Fiscal year '22. It's important to note, in green, added more recently to the plan, parts of Bellflower Ridge and Hopkins required some necessary roof work. And so that was sort of a last-minute add that increased expenses. There is significant paving at Mentor High School, and we will look at a map here in a moment. There are big projects at the stadium. If you've driven by there, you're starting to see things being fenced off. There is a new weight training facility with a Plaza Gate and ticket concession building that will all be close to one another. There is a new scoreboard coming for this fall. Our old scoreboard was on life support, and we're excited about that and its potential. And the track is being replaced this summer. And the track is being replaced this summer. So those are some of the big items in Fiscal Year 22, both on the facility improvement side as well as the CMR project side. And as you'll see around the campus, if you look carefully, work has begun. Just as an overhead, if you were trying to come in tonight, besides fighting off the traffic for the concert, you notice that Phase 1 of our parking lot paving has begun, and that's in blue. So that's the section directly in front of the high school and just to the south end, that south lot with the high school. When that wraps up around July 2nd, right after the July 4th weekend, Phase 2 will begin, and that's that orange section, which is the north lot. And finally, in the summer, in green, Phase 3 will begin, which is the lot that's the driveway between the stadium and the board office, and that driveway that goes back behind the board office toward the soccer lacrosse stadium. So you can see it's broken up, and we're starting right on time with that. Also, the new weight facility, Plaza Gate and Ticket Concession Building are all kind of put together. If you're walking toward it down the roadway from this direction toward that building, that's kind of the look that you'll get as you come upon the new structure. If you stood directly in front of the structure, it looks like that. And then, once you enter the stadium and look backwards at it, it'll resemble that. So we look very much forward to that, you know, in the coming months. As we look at Fiscal Year 23, you know, that work will be starting soon as well, and will start all the way until next summer. On the facility improvement side, you see in green, more recently added were roof repair plans for Shore and Memorial. And that's attached to this bigger plan. And then if you look on the CMR side, the Mentor High School Science Room renovations are listed in purple there because those were moved up in the schedule at the board's request last year. So we'll be starting work on those next June. The other big expense is an all-weather baseball field. And I'm going to show you the location on the map. The current varsity field that you know of, that's kind of way back there, will become our JV field. That will have some relatively smaller renovations done to make that a JV field, so we don't have to build a brand-new field. But the new varsity baseball field will be close to the roadway, but as next to the stadium there, as you see in the picture. So Center Field will be right next to the roadway there. As we jump into Fiscal Year 24, we continue with roofwork at Shore, but also we are adding in various amounts for paving, and that's around the district in general, because there are always spots that need tending to. And on the CMR side, we begin a three-year project to replace windows and doors at Mentor High School and some work on the visitor's side of the stadium. As we head into Fiscal Year 25, roof replacements continue. A lot of buildings are done in sections over a few-year period if it happens to be a bigger building. On the CMR side, the high school and window door projects continue. You will see a large chunk of money to create some additional parking spots, especially near the areas of campus where the new construction has taken place on some of our fields. We will need some more parking. As we head to Fiscal Year 26, Lake Elementary gets a new roof. The paving continues. Mentor High School window and door replacement enters its final phase, and we move some of the work indoors to address our varsity gym floor and bleachers in the varsity gym. And Fiscal Year 27, which was most recently added, and because it's the furthest year out, that's the hardest one to predict and the one most likely to change. Fairfax is due for a roof replacement. The paving continues, and we're pretty much counting on that every year to have some amount of paving. We will look at some needs for the football stadium at that point. That'll be due for a turf replacement, some storage garages, stadium LED lights, and some stadium exterior work. And I should say, these are all subject to change, based on funding, based on needs. Sometimes needs come in front of other needs, and we reorder things, but we do so very strategically. And it's important to keep the overall plan in mind when we're looking at any changes we may make. Mr. Wade, if you wouldn't mind jumping on this page?
So this just kind of gives the big-picture look from this current fiscal year through Fiscal Year 27. We've identified the funding needs. That was the left side of the charts that Mr. Porter presented, gives the totals across each fiscal year. And then the campus enhancements, which are the areas on the right side of his charts that he was referring to each fiscal year, gives a total there. Our PI levy brings in about $1.1 million in revenue annually. We take $100,000 off of the top of that that we use for sustainability for our Straight A funding, which Mr. Lynch, I'm sure, is going to speak of here shortly, which was a requirement of that grant when we received, I believe it was about $14 million in that grant back in 2015, 16, when I was still the high school principal. And we, you know, used that money to kind of move forward, but we've been using sustainability out of the PI fund to kind of continue with that. And we set aside $100,000 a year of that $1.1 million for emergencies that come up for things that we just can't control. RT units, rooftop units that would go out, repairs that we have to make to roofs throughout the year, and a variety of other things that kind of come up that fall into a useful life of five years. To help reduce those expenses, obviously, you can see, we have about $969,000 a year that we would have funding for these permanent improvement-type projects. It leaves a surplus or a shortage. It's always a shortage, as you can see in red here on our chart, that we subsidize through the general fund to make sure that we can continue to update our facilities, because it is important to maintain our facilities. Not maintaining our facilities puts us in a predicament of higher costs in the future. And one of the things that I can say about the Board of Education and our predecessors, former superintendents, and CFO Dan Wilson, it was important for us to have this five-year plan so that we didn't put ourselves in a situation where we couldn't maintain our facilities, and we had to ask for more money in the future than we had planned on. So how we have funded this is we've take a portion of the underspending of the budget from previous years to offset some of these costs. We also take a portion of the over-collection of revenue from the previous year, and we subsidize that out of the general fund, as I said. So you can see that each fiscal year, we're subsidizing about, on average, $3.7 million a year out of the general fund, because the $1 million that we collect in the PI fund does not cover the costs to do that. It doesn't even cover the cost to do the roofing that we need to do just to keep the schools open. One of the things that Mr. Porter has done in recent months as a way to continue to find ways to meet our fiscal management practices is he has created a position for Dr. Glavin as a Director of Business Partnerships. And I think that is a fantastic idea, to utilize the new scoreboard that we have to generate additional revenue to offset the costs and reduce the expenses of a lot of these projects going forward, to generate advertising revenue that will help support and reduce the expenses and hopefully reduce those surpluses and shortages going forward, as well as finding sponsorships for naming rights for things throughout the district again to generate additional revenue. So we're not just sitting back and saying, hey, how can we reduce costs? I think we see that with the use of Taylor Consulting or Millstone Management and TDA and working together to figure out ways to adjust things, to have cost savings through the process of construction, but also finding ways to generate new revenue for some of the things that we're doing. So, you know, I commend Mr. Porter for his execution of that plan, and I guess promoting, if you will, Dr. Glavin to that new role of Director of Business and Community Relationships.
Thank you, Mr. Wade.
I believe the next slide is still mine there, right, Mr. Porter?
It is, Mr. Wade.
So I would be remiss not to point out the fact that we have a permanent improvement levy that generates just a little bit over $1.1 million a year. We hear a lot about inflation lately. I think the latest rates were just above 8% or just below 9%. I think they went up this last month. You know, the economy continues to get out of sorts, so to speak, and we'll be interested to see what the Fed does with the interest rates here in the next day or two, to see where that goes. But from that standing, if you look at that levy passed in 1988, $1 million in 1988 does not have the same value that $1 million has today. In actuality, because it's a fixed-dollar levy, the effective millage rate of one mill now is collecting under, it's like close to .4 and some change mills that it actually collects to generate that. So if you adjusted that $1 million of 1988 dollars to our current dollars, that would actually bring in about $2.1 million in actual revenue. So we're basically collecting half of what was, we could buy half of what we could have bought in 1988, is what I guess I'm trying to say. I've mentioned this before in some of my other presentations as well. Carnegie Mellon University School of Architecture did a study, a white paper, if you will, on addressing inadequate investment in school facility maintenance. And they said that you should have a permanent improvement or money set aside at about 2% of your replacement value. Our replacement value of our insured property is about $250 million, which would equate to about $5 million annually that we should have just to maintain our plant that we operate here at Mentor Schools. If you look back at the previous slide, you can see we're spending about $5 million a year to do the enhancements in the projects that we're doing, and we're currently using about $3.7 million out of the general fund to subsidize that projects, because the $1 million just doesn't cover it. And as I said, it doesn't even cover the paving and the roofing projects that we'd have to do. So, you know, we're spending approximately $4.4 million annually on preventative maintenance, repairs, and upgrades, and I think it's, you know, it's going to behoove the district moving forward, as I've said, and we've had discussions on this as a board, that there is going to be a need to look at permanent improvement levies and a PI fund increase in the near future. Again, just to keep the doors open. You know, you look at the cost of the windows and door project at the high school, which is about $1.5 million a year. You look at the roofing project costs that are about $1 million annually. You look at the paving cost for the high school was just, it's actually a little bit over $1.3 million, and that paving is only going to last us seven to eight years. So we're going to have to do that again, and that's just the high school. And we have a lot of different parking lots, as everybody knows, throughout the district. So with that, I think one of the things that we are doing that's smart is we're looking at a budget, you know, we're presenting that to the board, presenting that to the community. But we also have to consider where that revenue is coming from, and if we can, you know, a PI fund, just to remind everybody, that money can only be spent on things that have a useful life of five years. It can't be used for salaries and benefits. You know, it can only be used for books, balls, bricks, buses, and balls. So it's kind of where we look at it. So it has to have a useful life of five years, and that money is really prioritized to those specific types of things. And I think it's time that we, you know, start to move that discussion, because again, if we were to increase the PI fund, we'd be reducing the amount of money that we're subsidizing out of the general fund, and that would also extend the life of the current funding that we have, and also reduce the need for additional funding from a general fund standpoint, if and when we have to go and get, seek additional revenue. So I share that as, you know, as my role to advise the board and the community on complete transparency. And I think, you know, every time we have the opportunity to have that discussion, we should bring it up, because it is something that we need to consider just moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Wade. Also, part of, sort of part of our, an offshoot of our capital plan, vehicle replacement. Also, as we have done the past several years, we continued with our purchasing plan of getting five new 71-passenger buses this year. We've been on that cycle. We will continue that again next year, with about $535,000 budgeted for that in the coming school year. And you can see we need a lot of buses. That's an iconic picture, just from this year's graduation, all the buses heading down to the Wolfstein Center again.
And I would just point out again that we subsidize that out of the general fund, and it could be a PI expense into the future, that we, you know, we have to maintain our fleet. We have to be able to get the kids to school. And we should thank Ms. Skolsky for receiving the grant that she did to reduce that cost this year. So thank you for that again, just to mention that was about $135,000 that we had.
I agree. And so Ms. Skolsky helps us put together this, as well as the next slide, vehicle replacement. So buses are not the only vehicles we have in the district. We have a number of maintenance and grounds vehicles, vehicles for nutrition services, moving meals around, for courier services, and so we do have a replacement plan for those as well, that's outlined with five, you know, in five years. With that, I'm going to turn things over to Mr. Lynch for the second part of this presentation
Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Porter and Mr. Wade, I always appreciate the opportunity to get to talk to you a little bit about technology in the district. So before I begin, I do want to talk about themes that we have in our IT department, which always comes back to fiscal responsibility, maximizing the life of the devices that we have in the district, but making sure that we don't hold on to these devices too long, because if we do, it ends up costing us time and money, as we oftentimes will resell those devices at auction, take that money, and then use that to buy new devices for our students and our staff. And then, because we do this, it allows us to have consistent and quick IT support for our staff, students, and our parents. If we hold on to those devices, or if we continue to keep devices in the district that we have replaced, it ends up taking time away, and we are not able to offer this quick IT support. So this first slide is just an overview of all of the hardware in the district, and this is the budget that is spent on this. I'm going to take the next four slides after this, break it down into a couple of different groups, an elementary group, a middle school group, and a high school group, and then as well as the extra things in our district, extra devices in our district that are needed. So this is a compilation of all of the devices, hardware that is purchased in the district. I do want to point out, that just was highlighted in the green, this dollar amount has changed over the last year. It used to be drastically higher, as Mr. Wade has given us some nice recognition over the last couple of board meetings with the ECF funds that we have received from the district, close to $1 million that we have received, and we certainly appreciate that in the IT department. But one of the things that that has done is it's put a saturation of other devices, not just our district has received funds, but everybody across this country has had an opportunity to receive some of those funds. So there now is a saturation of older devices out there, and so what we were once receiving about $225 for, for a MacBook, this past auction, we just received a little over $125. What once we were receiving about $150 for the iPads we were selling, we anticipate that going down to about $75. So we do lose a little bit of funds because of the saturation of devices that are out there. We will still take the close to $1 million we've received for this loss, but I do want to point that out. The other thing I want to mention is that last year, we made a switch in our device plan, where we moved to K-3 iPads, 4-8 Chromebooks, and 9-12 MacBooks. And we did this to add one last transition in for our students. But I will remind the board, as I presented last year on this, that we were over, by doing that, we were able to save over $900,000 on our five-year projections, because we took, we were maximizing the device life and taking that extra transition out. So that puts us close to about $1.8 million, Mr. Wade, that we now have saved the district over that year and a half time. So this next slide shows our elementary. This is elementary staff at the bottom. It says kindergarten on top, because that's when we dispersed the iPads at the kindergarten level. So you can see the projected enrollment, the case cost, the iPad cost. So you can see those yearly costs, as well as every five years, we replace staff So you can see those yearly costs, as well as every five years, we replace staff MacBooks and staff iPads. Again, when we came into, Mr. Woodward and myself came into the position of overseeing the IT department, we had close to two devices for every student and staff member in the district, and they didn't have two devices, although our staff, teaching staff does have an iPad and a MacBook, but we had an excess amount of devices in the district, and we weren't even one-to-one. We just had a lot of devices sitting around, not being used properly, sitting in carts and other things like that. And so what we have tried to do over the last few years is to really minimize extra devices in our district since we are now a one-to-one district, every student having their own device. And so through this cleanup, we were able to not only save money, but also put every device in the district on a five-year replacement plan. You can see next year, fiscal year, we will be replacing staff iPads at the elementary level. This next one is for our, it used to be a middle school slide, but we do, because we added that transition in, it is now a fourth grade slide because fourth graders receive Chromebooks, and then they will have those Chromebooks until their eighth grade year. But down at the bottom, it is our middle school staff that is still highlighted here of when their MacBooks are replaced and when their iPads are replaced. And that's what's highlighted on the MacBooks. And then finally, we have our high school device projection with regards to MacBooks. Again, reminding you that every ninth grade student receives a new MacBook, and then when they graduate their senior year, we collect those, which we did a few weeks ago. We are in the process of cleaning all of those MacBooks, and we'll be preparing them for auction. Those are currently the projected costs. I highlighted there of 779 dollars just a few weeks back. Apple did release that they have a new MacBook coming out. Apple usually holds on to, our MacBooks are already purchased and handed out to our students for next year, but those MacBooks, usually Apple does something in order to try to keep the cost down for education. So we would hope and anticipate that cost staying somewhat similar. If it doesn't, then we will have to relook at how we want to proceed. And then I mentioned all of the extra stuff. So on this slide, it's all of the other devices, from secretaries to nurses to custodians to food service, and on and on and on. So you can see that in order to run a district, it takes a lot of different devices, and our belief of making sure that all of these devices are on a five-year cycle will make sure that we are always operating with newer devices and having less problems with that equipment. I will point out, one of the largest expenses here is our wireless access points. Those were last replaced in 2019 and '20, and on our first slide, that's why you would have saw a little bit of an elevated cost. You see down at the bottom here, a summary of this page of 399,000. That's what has elevated that cost because of the wireless APs, access points, which gives internet connectivity in all of our buildings. That is an expensive venture. So that wraps up my technology one. Before I get away with it, before I get and move to classroom furniture, Mr. Wade did mention, and I want to address, the PI, the 100,000 dollars. And if you look at any district, and we received the grant in 2014, the Straight A Sustainability, we have really held on to that idea and that principle that we continue to take those sustainability funds and invest them in our high school. So as you walk around the high school, working with Mr. Wade, with Mr. Fetschek, and now with Mr. Crowe, we come up with a plan each year of how we're going to spend those funds. And so immediately after the grant year of 2014 and '15, we went back and we finished all of the classrooms. So that included the world language classrooms, the business classrooms, the FCS classrooms. We were able to go back each year afterwards to make sure that we finished all of the classrooms in Mentor High School. And then after that, we started to look at other special projects. The Student Center came out of those funds. As you walk through the high school and you see how we've transformed some of the hallway spaces, the outdoor arts classroom came out of those funds. And going into next school year, it's already started, as the lockers came down, we are adding two new science spaces up in upper B wing. And so you'll see those funds used each year with the guidance of the principal and any support that I can offer, that that's where those funds have gone. So I'm glad that Mr. Wade mentioned it in that part of the presentation. And then I do want to talk about the classroom furniture. This is primarily, so we use those Straight A Sustainability for the high school, so to make sure that we're also addressing our needs at the elementary and the middle school, we have this district furniture five-year plan. And over the last five years, we have concentrated on the elementary. I left 2021 and '22 up there. As Ms. Stevenson knows, her kindergarten classroom is getting her, their furniture this week and next. It is arriving. We had a truckload arrive yesterday. We have another two trucks arriving this Friday. And then finally, our largest shipment will be arriving next week into all of our elementary buildings. Our custodians will work on unpackaging all of that furniture. They will work on putting it all together and laying it out to the maps that the teachers, the kindergarten teachers and myself created before they left for their summer break. And so we are excited to say that we will be finishing up kindergarten classrooms, which finishes up our elementary buildings. We do have a couple of classrooms here and there that Ms. Bowser and I are working on with special ed, but we have been able to address and even provide a large projector screen in our PE classrooms. Our STEAM classrooms were fortunate when they came in that we had given new furniture. We have redone our art classrooms and our music classrooms as well. And so that is going to complete the elementary part of the district furniture plan. Already working with Mr. Dwyer and Ms. Blackburn, we have ordered pilot classroom furniture for the start of next school year for our middle schools, and we will identify a few more middle school classrooms as we go throughout next year to do some pilot classrooms to add in. Middle school classrooms were the first classrooms done back in 2013. They were given choices between some no desks. Those are the, kind of, the desks on wheels with the desk pull-around. And so we're going to come back around and offer some options of soft seating and storage for the middle school classrooms, and you can see that that is projected out over the next two and, over the next three years. And then we will then, at that point, be at a nine-year timeline of, for the fifth-grade furniture. We expect the hard surfaces and the chair surfaces to last 15 to 20 years, but the soft seating that we added in there, we expect that to last eight to 10 years. And so we will start to revisit those classrooms that we had finished now, five years ago. And so you'll see how that projects out there as well. And so I just wanted to, like I do each year, provide you any updates or any changes. We haven't seen too many changes to that. We did push out and decided to do the pilot classrooms next year for the middle school, so that's really the only change from the slide from last year. So at this time, myself and Mr. Porter would be happy to answer any questions.
I think it's very exciting to look at the overarching permanent improvements and how that's all been navigated. Our Memorial Middle School, which was the original high school, is 100 years old this year. And because I think our community, especially 30 years ago when that decision was made to renovate Memorial rather than to tear it down and replace it with something else, it shows that there's an embedded pride in our, in our community for the buildings that serve our students and that by maintaining them, that they don't get to a point where they're beyond repair, or they're not an embarrassment to us as a community, that we take care of our facilities, whether it's roofing or all the paving. It's such a big job, but it has paid off handsomely, and it makes me proud when I look at all of that. And even just down to the details, Mr. Lynch, when you shared how each student, or each, I'm sorry, teacher who's having his or her classroom renovated, that they sit with you and spend the time to make those selections. There's an engagement and a buy-in, I think, that makes a very important part of the whole teaching and learning process. So, thank you. That's my point.
Thank you. Thank you. That concludes the permanent improvement presentations for tonight.
All right, legislative report, Mr. Tuttle.
Thank you. You're probably aware the Ohio Legislature broke for a long recess. The Ohio House of Representatives and the Ohio Senate finished a busy May legislative calendar to return to their districts and begin campaigning for the August 2nd primary. Speaker Robert Cupp and Senate President Matt Huffman indicated that unless needed, the Ohio House and the Ohio Senate would likely return after the November general election. Before recessing, Ohio General Assembly moved forward several education-related bills to Governor Mike Dewine for his signature, including House Bill 583. The bill is sponsored by Reps. Adam Byrd, Republican, New Richmond, and Don Jones, Richmond, I'm sorry, Republican, Freeport, and would extend the current temporary flexibility for school districts regarding the educational requirements of substitute teachers until June 30th, 2024, and established a study committee to examine the substitute teacher shortage. And we've been feeling that for some time now, this shortage. The governor was expected, and he did sign a bill that establishes training requirements for arming staff in schools. He signed that on Monday, just yesterday. The Ohio Supreme Court in Gabbard versus Madison Local School District Board of Education ruled that individuals whom a school board authorizes to go armed in a school safety zone must complete an approved basic peace officer training program. Since that court decision, the General Assembly has been discussing the issue of training and requirements for those individuals. The Ohio House presented their legislative recommendation as House Bill 99, sponsored by Rep. Thomas Hall, Republican, Madison Township. The bill expressly stated that its intent was to overrule the decision in Gabbard versus Madison Local School District Board of Education. Additionally, the bill would establish requirements for a person authorized to go armed within a school safety zone and would establish training requirements. The Ohio Senate presented House Bill, I'm sorry, Senate Bill, Senate presents a Senate Bill, sponsored by Senator Frank Hoagland, Republican, Mingo Junction, a different legislative recommendation than House Bill 99. Senate Bill 168 would establish the Ohio Mobile Training Team Program that provides basic firearms training programs to school safety destinies and includes quarterly training required for continued certification. The Ohio Senate in May incorporated several provisions of Senate Bill 168 into House Bill 99. The bill details the initial requirements, including training for an individual to go armed into a school safety zone, and creates the continued training needed for reauthorization. School boards, it's important that you understand, school boards retain local control to determine if they will authorize an individual and are permitted to adopt alternate curriculum, instruction, and training with approval from Ohio School Safety and Crisis Center, created under the bill. Governor Dewine has publicly stated that he will sign the bill, and he did do that. This report I wrote last week, so. House Bill 650, this is recently introduced legislation. House Bill 650, introduced by Reps. Scott Wigan and Tom Young, both Republicans, to require photo ID to vote and to require the Bureau of Motor Vehicles to provide free state ID cards to persons 17 and older. That's an excellent idea. I totally support that. Any comments there? House Bill 651, introduced by Reps. Wigan and Mark Johnson to change eligibility requirements for supplemental nutrition assistance program benefits. That's a positive thing in the right direction. House Bill 658, introduced by Rep. Catherine D. Ingram, Cincinnati, to require the award of attorney's fees to an aggrieved person if a court of appeals determines in an appeal by a public office from a court of claims, order that the public office denied the person access to public records in violation of public record laws. Now, that was a mouthful, one long sentence. House Bill 659, introduced by Ingram to require the State Board of Education to adopt rules regarding disclosures of the for-profit status of community school operators, and to adopt rules regarding promotional materials published by and an unaffiliated person and contracts for employment. House Bill 663, introduced by Representative Mary Lightbody, Democrat, Westerville, to establish a loan repayment program to award no more than 40,000 to an eligible teacher who is employed in schools with low performance ratings and with difficulty attracting and retaining classroom teachers. Seems like that's a good thing in the right direction. House Bill 667, introduced by Lightbody to establish the Grow Your Own Teacher Program for low-income students who commit to teaching in a qualifying school for four years upon graduation, or to a qualifying employee who commits to teaching in a qualifying school upon graduation, and to provide a $7,500 scholarship per academic year to a qualifying student, and upon completion of the four years of teaching requirements, the remainder of the loan is forgiven. What's interesting on those two House Bills, there's a shortage of teachers, and there's not as many people today, young people, going into teaching as once did 20 years ago, and this will help to promote that. House Bill 677, introduced by Young to require the county auditor to send each taxpayer certain minimum information about a levy that proposes a property tax or income tax by either electronic means or mail, and requires the entity proposing the levy to reimburse the auditor for the notice expenses. Here's another interesting one. House Bill 694, introduced by Rep. Thomas Patton, Republican, Strongville, to authorize a total property tax exemption for the homesteads of totally disabled veterans and to surviving spouses under that spouse dies or remains. Senate Bill 335, introduced by Senators Frank Hoagland and George Lang, to modify the homestead property tax exemption for disabled veterans to be determined by multiplying the current taxes charged by the percentage of the disabled veteran's disability. So that's a little variation of the previous 694 introduced by the House. Another good point here, Senate Bill 343, introduced by Senator Matt Dolan, to make capital appropriations for fiscal year 2023 and 2024, including 600 million dollars of OFCC and 100 million dollars ARPA funds for school safety grants, among other provisions. So that's in the right direction. Comments, questions?
Any comments?
Next.
All right, moving on to the student achievement report. Thank you, Mr. Tuttle.
You're welcome.
The end of the school year comes with many celebrations for student achievement, and Mentor School has many accomplishments to be proud of. First and foremost, Mentor High School proudly graduated 611 students with a class of 2022 on June 4th at the Wolfstein Center. Congratulations to our graduates and their families. Celebrating their first graduation ceremony for our preschool Cardinals on May 26th, the Early Childhood Education Career Tech Program held a preschool graduation ceremony. Both of these ceremonies can be viewed on the Cardinal Channel. At the end of the school year, our elementary schools hold annual field day celebrations. PTA volunteers join our students and staff in a day of physical activities, fun, and food. Parental involvement is critical to our success, and our schools are thankful to have so many volunteers on a regular basis. Another tradition at the end of the year is the induction of students into our National Junior Honor Societies at Shore and Memorial, as well as the National Honor Society at Mentor High School. Students accepted into NJHS and NHS are selected for their exceptional accomplishments in the areas of scholarship- in the areas of scholarship, service, leadership, and character. Members are challenged to be actively involved in both school activities and community service. And it was a privilege to witness the Memorial NJHS Ceremony, and Mrs. Payne and I were both proud to represent the board at the high school ceremony where 74 new members were inducted into NHS. In addition to our National Honor Society induction ceremonies, the Mentor High School Underclass Awards Ceremony was celebrated, and they celebrated many academic and character achievements to our undergraduate students on May 17th, and Memorial held their ceremony on May 25th. Further opportunities for celebrating our students' talents were available when our young musicians put together spectacular performances and exhibitions of their artistic abilities. Our high school and middle school orchestra band and choirs held concerts in May. Our district's commitment to the visual and performing arts starts in kindergarten and culminates in award-winning pieces during students' high school years. Recently, Congressman Dave Joyce announced Isabella Graham as the winner of the 2022 Congressional Art Competition for Ohio's 14th Congressional District. Graham, who is a junior at Mentor High School, won with her submission, "Trapped in My Skin." Her artwork will be placed on display in the U.S. Capitol for an entire year. MHS students took first, second, third, and fourth place in this highly competitive contest. The competition's honorable mentions include three Mentor High School students. Second place, Teresa Morick, with her submission of "Hungry for the Past," will be displayed at the Congressman's Washington, DC office for a year. Third place went to Devon Ambrose. His artwork, titled "Intent," will be on display in one of the Congressman's district offices for a year. And fourth place went to Teresa Morick. Her piece, titled "Coke Addiction," will be displayed in one of the Congressman district's offices for a year. Congratulations goes to our PTSA reflection contest winners, Julia Maynard with the Award of Excellence in Visual Arts, Mallory Chacon, Honorable Mention for Visual Arts, Maile Milo, Award of Outstanding Achievement in Photography, and Jordan Halkberger, an Honorable Mention in Photography. Four Mentor High School students will be receiving the Believe in Ohio STEM Innovation and Entrepreneurship Scholarship for $1,000. Please join me in congratulating Grace Chen, Alessandra Klein, Mara Murray, and Hanea Imran. The award is a result of their work in their science research course taught by Lori Cohen. Mentor High School has also been recognized as a Shaw Outstanding School at the 2022 State Science Day. This is a result of the school having most or all of our students earn superiors on their projects. Mentor High School is only one of eight schools to receive this recognition. Congratulations to our students who competed at the State Science Day competition, Grace Chen, Hanea Imran, Claire English, Alessandra Klein, Yashwarya Paki, Carson Phrase, Lucas Spencer, and their teacher, Lori Cohen. And I'd also like to wish our state and debate team luck. We currently have members competing at the national competition in Louisville, Kentucky. Good luck to our team and advisors, Mrs. Tracy Coleman and Mrs. Amy Rutiger. Thank you.
Excellent. And Chief Financial Officers, report and recommendations, Mr. Wade.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Porter. Quick update on our financials. This is a financial comparison to our May update. We're showing about $283,000 in revenue that exceeded what we were expecting even back last month in the May update, and reduction of expenses of about $290,000, and I'll explain that here this evening. Currently, comparison of our May revenue collections to the prior year, we're down about $387,000 in May revenue. Primarily, as I've said throughout the entire year, this is a reduction in the unrestricted funding that we received from the state based on the new state model for funding. So we've known that kind of all along, and that is the reason why in May, if you compare May to last year, we're down $387,000. We are down year-to-date collections of $120,000, again, a result of the lower collection of the unrestricted state aid, per the new state formula. We are seeing overall about $283,577 more than we projected in May. This is because we received our Medicaid reimbursement, and it came in larger than we expected, so that was positive. So we're seeing about $283,000 more than we projected. Looking at our expenses, our expenses this month in comparison to last May is we are up about $2.3 million, and this really comes down to timing of when the expenses were expensed this year versus last year. So there's real, no difference there, but mostly because of timing. And if we look at the year-to-date difference, it's because of the increase in our salaries and benefits for the year, as well as the transfer that we had made to the 070 account, as well as to our budget reserve, as we've said every month. And when we look at our expenses being down, $290,000, this is because of the fact that we had a correction in our SERS collection that we made, and when we were projecting out, I was just wrong, to be quite honest. I overestimated it, and it was, everything worked out with another refund that we received, which offset that. So we're actually going to save about $290,000 that we didn't project to save. So that's a good thing. I'm always glad to be wrong on the right side of being wrong, I guess, in this case. So overall, we're looking to be in a good spot, continued financially, as we looked at what we appropriated back in the fall and September. We will see another expense coming up in our June 30th meeting. We will have a June 30th special meeting to remind the board to close out our fiscal year, as well as to approve our temporary appropriations for next fiscal year. We are going to fund our building budgets and our department budgets at 100%, and we're going to be near 100% for our salaries and benefits. That's atypical of what we've usually done, but we're still going to call it a temporary appropriations in the June meeting, simply because of the fact that that's best practice, because once we finalize the appropriations, it's not best practice to go back and finalize it again. So staffing continues to work itself out over the summer. We'll do a final appropriation in September, as we've always done, but for all intents and purposes, we'll be 99.9% in our June meeting. So I'm proud about that, proud of the work that our departments and Mr. Porter and his team did to help us do that. And I'd like to thank my department and their help in getting that accomplished as we close out our fiscal year and transition to a new payroll system. So our department's working very hard this month to do that, and they should be commended for their work. We will see, at that June 30th meeting, another transfer to the permanent improvement fund of $517,000 that will eat into some of these savings that we had, but that goes back to the presentation, as Mr. Porter shared earlier. We added the funding for the roof projects that we didn't initially have at the beginning of the year. So though that those projects exceeded $1 million in total, we're only going to have to transfer an additional $517,000 to the O3 fund to cover those projects because of savings that we've had throughout some of the other projects that we've done throughout the year. Excuse me. It is also worth noting, with the approval of the MCE contract tonight and the approval that the board did for the exempt and the administrators, I will be presenting an updated forecast, May forecast, at the June 30th meeting. Anytime there's substantial changes to the forecast, you should do an update so that that gets published online, so our community can see those changes and see the results of those impact. Not going to adversely impact us and the board, as we had talked throughout negotiations, had been looking at the impact of that. It is one of our fiscal management beliefs to always live within the five-year forecast, so we knew what was going to happen. Now we're just going to solidify that, that the board has approved those contracts and those adjustments. I will present an updated forecast to the board, and then we'll get that uploaded into the system, so it'll be on the state system, so everybody can see that. And I'll make mention of that at the July meeting, just as a point of contention, because that's where most of our community comes. And I spoke to the appropriations, so that includes my update, unless there's any questions. With that, Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Porter, I would ask that we approve items A through F in my section.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Bryner.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0. Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Porter, I ask that we approve the Mentor Public Library Tax Budget.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Ms. Bryner.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0. That concludes my portion of the meeting.
Thank you. Unfinished business?
Yes. If I may, Madam President, members of the board, at the request of the board, I worked with Mrs. Bonas and our curriculum department to create procedures for adopting board materials. Part of this process includes having two board members serve as curriculum liaisons. The appointed liaisons would meet three times during the year, fall, winter, and spring, with the superintendent, members of the curriculum department, and/or other staff members to be updated on curriculum initiatives and other relevant information. In addition to these three meetings, these two board members would meet with the superintendent, members of the curriculum department, and/or other staff members, when appropriate, be informed regarding curriculum materials that may be on the board agenda. In addition, in regard to the curriculum procedure overview, the curriculum course of study and/or textbooks would be placed for public review, on public review for five days, two weeks prior to the Board of Education meeting. Public notification of material review would be posted on the front page of the school website. Additionally, parents of students that will be affected by the curriculum revision and/or adoption will be sent an email notifying them of the public review. Upon completion of the public review of curriculum guides, course of studies, and/or textbooks, the superintendent curriculum director and select members of curriculum committees will meet with the designated board liaisons prior to board adoption. These steps allow for greater transparency, better communication, and ensure more board involvement prior to the adoption. So I respectfully ask, Madam President, if we can appoint two board members as liaisons.
I would like to nominate Mrs. Payne as one of those liaisons.
Can I understand, Ms. Jessling?
Yes, I would be happy to serve. My background, I think, would be a good complement to the role that we'll be playing in that partnership with our curriculum department.
And Mrs. Payne, agreeable?
Yeah, I would be very excited. I think this whole process is going to increase transparency and trust, and I just thank you, Mr. Porter, and, you know, Barbados and the curriculum team for putting this into place.
Thank you.
Don't need a vote on this, do you?
No.
Thank you. All right, moving on, any new business?
Madam President, I'd like to have a discussion on the House Bill 99. House Bill 99, it was just signed by our governor, retains school board control to authorize individuals to carry guns on school grounds. School boards are permitted to adopt instruction and training procedures that must meet the minimum standards set forth by this bill. It is my opinion that it is critical that we act quickly on creating policy for mentor schools. We currently have summer school going on and staff that may wish to pursue training, and it is my opinion that we create policy that protects our schools by limiting guns to trained law enforcement professionals. I feel that we should be creating policy that protects our schools by limiting guns to trained law enforcement professionals. We should be placing highly-trained professional school resource officers in the buildings. The Fraternal Order of Police of Ohio, representing 24,000 law enforcement professionals who risk their lives daily, oppose this bill, along with the Ohio Education Association with 120,000 members. Police officers are highly trained in the use of force, de-escalation, weapons retention, and are trained to manage the psychological stress of the high-stress traumatic situations. We ask our staff to use research-based decisions, yet this bill had no research that supported its effectiveness, and in my opinion, it creates a liability for our district and our students.
I thought we had a policy in place for something like this. I thought there was some kind of policy that said we weren't doing this, like we weren't going to arm teachers. Am I right? Was there a prob-
You're right that it was mentioned.
Okay, maybe it was mentioned.
It was mentioned. I don't think we could find that policy.
Okay, because I was looking for it too, and I couldn't find any, anything on that.
Correct. I remember it was mentioned in one of our discussions that we've had recently as a group, and when Mr. Hammond and I, and I believe Mr. Porter went back to look, we could not find one that was on record.
I think it was a position that we took formally as a board, and rather than creating a policy, we created a declaration of our choice to keep our campuses gun-free, with the exception of law enforcement professionals. And I couldn't agree more, Mrs. Cook, especially coming from Chardon, where you went through that terrible situation 10 years ago. How difficult, virtually impossible, I think it is for a classroom professional, staff, to have two different modes of response, from your normal workplace, serving the needs of students, focusing on them, and responding to a law enforcement crisis, which we know just based on the news can be overwhelming for even the most highly-trained officers. The liability piece was an additional concern that we discussed among ourselves. So I agree, having a formal policy that we've made that choice to limit firearms to just qualified police officers makes good sense to me.
Would we possibly be able to expand that conversation, whether it's, you know, not tonight, at a different time, or for like a special meeting, to talk about the safety of our schools in general as well? Because I know we all received a lot of emails in reference to the shooting that occurred and what we could possibly do better, you know, to protect our students. So I would like to, I know I'm new, and Maggie's new, so, you know, I'm not quite sure all of the pieces and parts that we have in place right now for that, but I would like to kind of dive into this deeper and expand the topic to safety of our students.
I would like to just say that the latest school shooting is not the first time that we've talked about this topic. We've talked about this topic over the years. And in my experience, I've had discussion over the years with law enforcement, educators. I've done some research on this topic, and I'm in agreement with Mrs. Cook. I think that it's time that this board drafts a policy. I wish I had answers to this situation, but I'm in agreement with everything you're saying. I think our teachers and our staff have enough on their plate. I don't want guns in our schools, period.
Mr. Porter, would you like to add some clarification to the safety committee that is in place right now?
Certainly. So safety is one of the arms of our strategic plan. We do a lot with safety, and it's interesting because I get a lot of emails about safety right after major shootings, like the one in Texas, but very few at other times of the year. But in Mentor, for several years now, we don't wait for a school shooting to respond or react. We're continually revising, improving, practicing school safety. We're holding regular meetings with police and fire and mental health professionals, including Crossroads and NAMI. Safety is constantly on our minds, and it ranges from our protocols at the entries to the buildings, to the drills that we run. We actually exceed our drills. We actually exceed our drills, to the purchase of extra security cameras, to background checks of volunteers, to the mental health supports that we continue to add, to the filters on our computer system, to school bus safety. Just, just that list alone just barely scratches the surface. It's extensive. And a lot of the things that we've done have been featured quite a bit in our video updates, in our school communications. And some of the safeguard, you know, a lot of safeguards we can share with the public. Some safeguards we're not able to share. The police don't want us to share because it's part of our response plan. So not 100% of things get shared. I'm certainly not opposed to, you know, a meeting on safety, if, if that's what the board desires. The safety experts will tell you, there is no perfect set of protections for schools, unfortunately, or for anywhere that we may go, grocery stores, churches, malls. But in our district, safety's under, continually under a state of review. The police and fire in Mentor, and Mentor-on-the-Lake have been the greatest partners we could possibly ask for. They're outstanding. And a lot of the work in safeguards that we have here in Mentor are not necessarily in place in other districts. But I'd be the first to tell you that our, our work is never done in this area. Specifically, you know, with regard to, you know, the bill, I spoke with Chief Gunch this week, and he is not in favor of arming those who are not trained officers. He believes that having someone armed who is, well, he says the likelihood for accidental shootings, he believes, could increase significantly under those conditions. And he knows even having someone armed is still not a guarantee of safety. In addition, the lead attorney for our district that we use, for a lot of the same reasons that Chief Gunch mentioned, did not believe, you know, would not advise that for, for our district. There are some districts that I think the governor was thinking about when he signed off on the legislation, because there are some rural districts in Ohio where the police or the sheriff's offices literally cannot get to some of those buildings, you know, in, you know, 15, 20, or 25 minutes. We are fortunate to have, you know, in most cases, our, our police are relatively close to our buildings. We have very robust plans, but again, we're always working on those plans. So I don't know if that answers your question, Mr. Tuttle, but I did, I did want to give some of that feedback.
No, that's very good. No, I, I think that was very helpful that our people here today, listening, and hear what is actually being done in our practice that we follow right now for safety. That's critical. And yes, the, there are probably some cowboys in the state of Ohio that are willing to carry a gun into their schools as a teacher because they've grown up firing a weapon. But still, they're not skilled, they're not trained, as our police force is. And I trust them to do what is right. I don't, I would not expect our teachers to, any one of our teachers, even if he or she feels qualified, to carry a weapon into our school building. Because to shoot someone is not easy. What you do is freeze up.
I think in terms of a policy, having a statement that we not only don't prefer to have anybody else but a licensed, trained police officer, but we, we forbid it. I think I would be willing to go, and make that as part of our formal policy, that we're a gun-free zone with that one exception. Because the, the likelihood that something could be misused, it just, it strikes me as being a tremendous liability that's unlikely to do anything to improve safety, and in fact, would work the opposite way.
I, I would just like to add that this was also a part of our interview process and our second round interviews with our next superintendent, because we wanted to know their position in hiring the next leader of our school district. So I believe our next step would be for Mr. Wade and Mr. Porter to start working with our legal counsel to start drafting a policy. Am I correct on that? Okay. So if you would start working on that, please. I believe Mrs. Cook stated correctly that we believe that we shouldn't wait on this. So if you could start working on that, please. Any other comments or?
No, thank you.
Questions on this? Okay. Any other new business? Thank you. All right. Do we have hearing of the public on any items?
Madam President and members of the board, my name is Cordelia Clammer, and I am an incoming senior at Mentor High School. My older brother and I have been lifelong Mentor School students. In a very real sense, Mentor Schools are a part of our home. I am here today to ask you not to make our schools more dangerous by allowing firearms in. Governor DeWine made it clear that allowing teachers to be armed is a local choice. I cannot imagine a situation where minimally-trained teachers will be able to use a firearm to make our schools safer. Do not take my word for it. Just look to Uvalde, Texas. In 2019, Texas enacted what they call "school hardening efforts", which allowed teachers to carry firearms into Texas schools. Unfortunately, we now know how arming teachers did not prevent or lessen the Uvalde tragedy. And just last week, the Texas Tribune reported that even in light of the Uvalde tragedy, the Texas Teachers Union showed that 76% of Texas teachers do not want to be armed. I have to tell you that I have so many great teachers, so many at Mentor that have changed my life. I know how hard it is for them to have a, a positive impact on students. And they deserve to be able to focus on the work they do as teachers. Putting this burden on them is just not fair. Teachers have many responsibilities, as I'm sure you already know, one of which being the responsibility of keeping their students safe in case of emergencies. But this is not synonymous with the responsibility of stopping a gunman. Inside Mentor Schools are varying security officials who can do exactly that. Teachers deserve to pursue their profession the way they love and the way they, they're supposed to do. This new legislation in Ohio is nothing short of ridiculous. Expecting a teacher with some 24 hours of training to engage in a firefight with an intruder while caring for a classroom of 30 frantic children is absurd. In Uvalde, Texas, Texas law requires armed teachers to take four times the amount of training required in Ohio. But that did not save any of the lives lost. Arming Mentor School teachers will not prevent these tragedies. Don't take my word for it. Just look to, to the Uvalde tragedy as an example. As a student in Mentor, a subject of these tragedies, I ask the board to take action against arming teachers. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Madam President, respected members of the Board of Education, Mr. Porter and Mr. Wade. My name is James Cherian. I reside at 7940 Newell Creek Drive. We have three children attending Mentor Schools. I'd like to begin with some appreciation for you, Mr. Porter, as you enter your last few weeks of, as being superintendent. At the end of Mentor Racial Justice Week about two years ago, we marched in silence to the Civic Center in support of Black Lives. And at the closing event, you gave a very supportive speech. You had nothing to gain by being there, and you probably had a lot to lose. Yet you showed up in support. At a Cardinal Circles meeting for families of Black students, you accepted our invitation, and you listened to our concerns. You're a part of our conversation as we sought to advocate and care for our children in a society that still sees them as less. Again, you had nothing to gain by being there. You could have claimed you were too busy, you could have just brushed us off. But you actually showed up, and you genuinely listened to us. I really appreciate that about you, Mr. Porter. And your efforts have not been in vain. The Circles for Black Families Group continues to meet and be a safe space for parents to discuss the trials and triumphs of our students in the district. Additionally, some of the parents from the group participate on the district's DEI committee and help provide a critical feedback to school leadership following the student-led walkout against racism this past school year. Both the Circles Group and the DEI work that thrived under your leadership, Mr. Porter, can be an added value to our district moving forward with the right support from our board and new, new superintendent, Mr. Heath. Too often, when it comes to diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives, it is Black people who end up with leftover scraps or nothing at all. I can say, as a second-generation Indian American, that my community of origin has benefited enormously from the civil rights work that Black people have given their blood, sweat, and tears for. People like me have eaten to our full at the table of diversity and equity. We have become the poster child, the so-called model minority, only to look around, both literally and figuratively, to see that the Black people who gave their lives for this table to be possible are still on the outside, while we are enjoying the meal inside. And acknowledging that this is even a problem that exists goes a long way to improving the lives of our Black students in our schools. So I want to reemphasize again, especially as we transition to Mr. Heath, and not to overwhelm you before your first day on the job yet, but here's my list. We need to increase the proportion of Black staff and teachers in our district. We need to increase sensitivity and understanding of the Black student experience in our schools. And we need to continue improving resources and education for all students to learn to live together in a diverse world. And since we're just talking about basics here, since I'm just talking about basics here, we need a dedicated administrative position that's dedicated to DEI. A special thank you to Robert Pruitt, another parent in the district who helped me compose this. And thank you again to our board and our hard-working administration for all your hard work. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board, and members of administration. I'm Lynn Muzika. I am a longtime resident of Pine Gate. My husband, my son, my daughter, my granddaughter, my grandson are all graduates of Mentor High School. And my one grandchild is at middle school in Mentor. I intended to speak on guns, and I am just, my heart is overflowing with gratitude for the comments made tonight. I am so glad to see your opinions on this very important issue. So I'm going to speak on something else instead, kind of following up on what the gentleman just mentioned. In the Canton City School District recently, they just passed a resolution to, that was, I'll read it in part, whereas Ohio House Bills 322, 327, and 616 have been introduced to amend and enact sections of the revised code regarding the promotion, teaching race, sex, and divisive concepts in Mentor, in Ohio schools. They are saying that these bills are contrary to the values of a Canton school system as expressed by longstanding board policy. They go on to talk about the danger and the harm to our students, our kids, if they are not taught diversity, inclusion, and critical thinking, and equity. And I urge you to support me in being against these bills and making our law, our people in Columbus aware of our feeling on it. They're, they're nothing but a problem. They're, they're nothing but, but scare tactics. They're nothing but things that will hurt our kids. Then lastly, since I've got one minute left, I understand that at the July meeting, there's going to be discussion on the, the books that are going to be approved. And I hope, again, with those, it will show diversity, inclusion, and equity for all of our students in Mentor. They're all such good kids, and they deserve the very best. And the board has always worked towards that, and I know that you will continue to do so. So I send my thanks. My kids have all, my husband, my kids have all gotten great educations, and it's a wonderful place to be because of the schools. So thank you very much.
Could you, what were those House bills or Senate bills that you mentioned, those numbers?
322, 327, and?
616?
I got them. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kristy Belahovic. I live on Dahlia Drive in Mentor-on-the-Lake, and I have two students at Lake Elementary. First, I would like to welcome the new superintendent, Mr. Heath, and say a big thank you to Mr. Porter for everything you've done for and with our district. It's truly appreciated. You leave big shoes to fill. So thank you. I would also like to express heartfelt support of what members of the board have suggested regarding the new law, House Bill 99, tonight. The risks that adding guns to the classroom presents to everyone in that school, teachers, students, staff, not to mention law enforcement, are just too great. The community does need reassurance and leadership right now, and I am looking forward to seeing that policy that forbids anyone other than trained law enforcement officers to be armed on school property. And in the meantime, a statement that our, or a resolution that our district has no intention of arming teachers would go a long way to reassuring this community. Our students and their families, as well as the rest of the community, need to know we will not have to worry about armed teachers in our schools, and I appreciate what you all said regarding that tonight. While on the subject of issuing statements and resolutions, echoing the last speaker, I also asked the board and superintendent to issue a statement or resolution against House Bill 322, 327, and 616, as many other districts in our state have already done, most recently, as mentioned, Canton. And these bills are ill-conceived, poorly written, and, to quote Canton's recent statement, "Seek to limit candid conversations about race and gender identity in our schools, spaces in which all children should feel safe and welcome." We have the opportunity to demonstrate leadership as a district in a positive way when it comes to all of these bills, House Bill 99, House Bill 322, House Bill 327, and House Bill 616. Let's do that. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lauren Marachaza. I live over on Oak Ridge Drive. I have two kids that attend Mentor Schools. I don't have to say much. I had a whole speech prepared. I'm going to just echo what everyone else has said so far tonight, and mention, too, that I was a senior here in Mentor, Mentor High School when the Columbine shooting occurred. And I remember being pretty afraid, but nothing compares to the fear that I now have putting my little kids on the bus after a school shooting like the one in Uvalde. There is nothing that compares to that sort of fear. And that's probably why, Mr. Porter, you hear from so many parents directly after those events. We just don't know what else to do. But this, tonight, what I am hearing from you all, Ms. Cook, thank you so much for bringing this up tonight. It really prevented me from rambling, which I realize I'm doing now, but I do want to say thank you so much for taking this action. It means the world to us, parents. Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Ms. Bryner?
Oh, sorry.
Hi, Diane Populous. Actually, I'm switching gears here and saying something positive. As a volunteer of Mentor Sports Concession for 14 years, I cannot tell you how ecstatic I am that there is a new concession stand. So thank you for putting that forward. Anybody that's ever volunteered there, you have seen doors falling off, no heat, no air, the power goes out all the time, and it's so disheveled and dilapidated. And if you're ever there on Friday night football, and that student section starts banging their feet, you are very positive that that whole roof is going to come down on you. So just a word of thanks for making that go forward. I'm really looking forward to volunteering, I hope not for another 14 years, but I'm looking forward to volunteering more in the new concession stand. Thank you.
And thank you for the 14 years of volunteering. I'm looking forward to seeing you in the